Yep. I don't see them for once.
I think people have been on vacation. What time is it? Seven oh two. Oh, we should get started. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this regular city council meeting. It is June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at seven P. M. If you're able, please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the connected states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the open forum. If you're watching online and want to call in, you can call into the open forum by dialing one four one five six five five zero 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 one. Use webinar access code two six three one five eight eight nine four four six, and the password is one two three four. For those of you that are here in attendance, please remember to state your name and address, and you can write it down, and you have three minutes to address the council. Is there anybody online at this point? Okay, so we'll go ahead with the people who are here in attendance. So first, I'd like to call Mary Best. If you would like to come forward, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Best. I live on sixty seventh and Elliott. I'm here to talk about part of the article today.
Can you speak into the mic? We can't hear you.
I'm Mary Best. I live at sixty seventh and Elliott. I'm here tonight to request that the city council reject the proposed parking ordinance that will eliminate or reduce parking requirements in all of Richfield. There's no urgency in this issue, except perhaps a change in the city council in November, who may have a different view. This proposal includes too many changes that could adversely affect future residences and businesses that have not even been planned yet. I do not believe the city council or the planning commission can divine rules that will cover all future circumstances. Is it not a far wiser course to move ahead with caution and perhaps incremental changes when necessary? Parking, or lack of, is already a contentious issue in Richfield. Ask any apartment resident living in one of our mega complexes that don't provide enough parking for its own customers, and don't forget their neighbors, who have no street parking in front of their houses left for their own use. Elimination or drastically reducing requirements seems premature. Richfield has a variance process already in place that allows for consideration of actual active projects. Variances provide flexibility and allow for exceptions. I know the staff has identified concerns. Tonight's proposal does not address them. Staff documented off-street parking issues, access for emergency and maintenance vehicles, sidewalks, boulevards, ADA requirements, and biking issues, none of which are addressed by this ordinance. It seems like the proposed course forward is wait and see if it's a problem, then we'll look at it. This approach also takes away the responsibility of the city and moves it to the residents to deal with. I've many times driven by Richfield Post Office. All the parking places are full. I park in the street and go in, and there's no one in the post office. Their response, I can't do anything about it. They're all enjoying a walk over at Wood Lake. Signs do not always deter people. It may seem far easier to authorize everything than it is to take it back once it does not work. Councilmember Leary published a paper where he picked existing Richfield businesses claiming that they could not be built today because of our ordinance. Yes, they could. That's why the variance process was developed, to consider exceptions. I point to the new business Swoop Optical on the end of sixty six and Elliott as a success story. We have a variance process. Let's use it wisely. Please reject this proposal ordinance and take another look at what else might work better for Richfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Larry Earnster.
Good evening. My name is Larry Earnster. I'm at sixty seven twenty seven Elliott. I come here also tonight to request that the city council reject the proposed parking ordinance that will eliminate or reduce parking restrictions. During this past year, this council has changed ordinances to eliminate citizen participation and to silence our voices. Some recent examples. First, the city council rezoned our single-family homes to low density to avoid the variance process. A duplex could have been built on any lot in Richfield with a variance. Now, no variance is required, no citizen participation is allowed. Then the city council eliminated the one acre minimum for PUDs. Rather than issue a variance, the city changed the ordinance. Ordinances are rules that both citizens and the city must comply with. Stop changing ordinances to avoid dealing with your citizens. Then the city council changed the ordinance to allow sacred communities, and I quote, "to avoid a frustrating and pointless public hearing process." In this case, the city council endorsed a state statute that home-ruled cities were not required to adopt. And tonight, you are considering reducing or eliminating parking restrictions that are also not required by statute, not required by charter, or by staff, but initiated by the city council to eliminate the need for a variance and to further isolate its citizens from the workings of the city. Consider a project on its needs and merits, and then conduct a variance if necessary. Tonight, reject the proposed parking reductions. Staff documented off-street parking issues, access for emergency and maintenance vehicles, sidewalks, boulevards, ADA requirements, and biking issues, none of which are addressed by the parking ordinance, only noted as concerns if this ordinance is implemented. There is no upside to approving this ordinance, only downside. We have the variance process. Let's use it. None of the proposed parking changes are urgent or necessary. Now I ask the city council, what is your vision for Richfield? Are you building another mini Minneapolis? Do you want Richfield to mirror Uptown? Richfield is our urban hometown. Reject the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen Balaban.
Kated on my speech card that I wanted to talk about records, which I will real quickly. I'm an avid user of data requests from the city, and I recently was informed that I was having problems getting the information I was requesting, and according to the statutes, it's public, and I was getting problems getting it. Long time waits, and I was recently informed that the city is obligated to give the data requests a turnaround time of ten days, ten business days, if an employee is asking about their own data. If I'm a citizen asking for data and not an employee, you have no time limits, none is established. So I'm waiting at times months for data that's available. I'm asking this council to set a timeframe that's reasonable according to statute for the turnaround for a citizen. We need, I need to know when I'm going to get this information. So I'm asking that. That's the first question. The second one was the agenda on the police thing that's in here for is staff report number ninety-two. This is consistent type of information that I get when I look at this stuff. It goes on and on and on, yadda, yadda, we're going to do this in forty-eight hours to sixty-four hours, ninety-six to one hundred and four hours. Yeah, it has a cola three percent, eight percent market adjustment. It's got this, that, and the other thing, and I appreciate the police department. I really do. Thank you very much. But what it doesn't say is, this is the part that always catches me and that I think the city council should be speaking with the staff to correct. What it says here, all up and down on this agenda, three percent wage increase, we got union workers, we got regular workers, we got this, we got that, it goes into all kinds of projects. And then when it gets down to here, financial impact, you know what it says? Wage increases as specified above for the different contracts and nominal adjustments to special assessment pay. Where's the dollars and cents, folks? Where's the budget to hit? Okay? You guys are going to say yes to this because we need it, but the citizens don't have any data here about how much it's going to cost us, even though they're important to us. This kind of reporting, this kind of agenda editing, and this kind of lack of documentation, keeping the citizens in the dark, is questionable at best. Actually, maybe even a little bit illegal. But more importantly, please do a better job at informing us of what you're doing and how you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that's here present? Is there anyone else that's online? All right. Well, thank you to everyone who participated in the open forum. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, the joint council and transportation commission meeting of June fifth, twenty twenty four, and the city council meeting of June eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Move approval?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve all three sets of minutes. Are there any comments or questions? All right. All in favor of approving those three sets of minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved those minutes. Next, we have the exciting job of honoring the twenty twenty four Jean and Mary Jacobson Citizen of the Year. And so I'm going to call up Human Rights Commissioner Carol Kelly to present the award and tell us all about our award winner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Supple. Hi, my name's Carol, and I am a commissioner on the Richfield Human Rights Commission. This year, we've selected an outstanding Citizen of the Year, and we've done so every year since nineteen seventy-one in honor of Jean and Mary Jacobson and their commitment to our community. This award is given to a person, family, group, organization, or business who lives and works in Richfield and whose actions demonstrate an awareness and commitment to the attitudes and practices that foster human understanding, tolerance, and the spirit of human relations. And, excuse me, I want to welcome Kim Jacobson, the son of Jean and Mary, to present this year's award.
Madam Mayor, council members, chief. Thank you for having me again. It's been ten years since my sister passed away and passed the mantle to me. Jean and Mary were big advocates of the Richfield community. They lived here for forty years and raised three children, and in that time, my dad was heavily involved, along with many other council members, on the improvements that we now see across Richfield. And my mom was a big advocate of the Richfield Wood Lake Nature Center. And I am grateful to be here still, and I'm going to give this award now to Scott Ramsey.
Wow, thank you so much. This is quite an honor and very unexpected. I have worked at Wood Lake Nature Center for twenty-eight years, and when Brittany had called me to say, Scott, guess what? You've been nominated for this award, and you've won it. I was totally shocked. I was totally taken aback, and I said, really? What an honor. I'm totally honored. Why? Why did I get it? What does it mean? And she said, well, for all of the service that you've done for the community at Wood Lake Nature Center. And here, I always thought I was just doing my job. As a public servant, I have tried to open doors and make all of Wood Lake and all of our parks available to everybody. And of all abilities, all ages, all genders, all races, to me, there's only one race, the human race, all ethnicities, and try to make people feel very comfortable there. Not only students and visitors, but we have a very strong volunteer program there, and I've worked with many, many volunteers of all ages, from twelve years old and up. And I must say, at certain times, people of differing abilities have been kind of a challenge, but I always took that challenge up because I really believed that they should be able to offer their abilities and have an input because everybody is a part of the fabric of our community. And Wood Lake and all of our parks are community institutions. So I want to thank the City of Richfield for supporting all the park system and also, of course, Wood Lake Nature Center. I thank the Human Rights Commission for honoring me with this award. It's very gratifying to be recognized when I just felt it was a part of my job to make everybody feel welcome at Wood Lake, and it was my pleasure to do so. I've loved working there. This is a great city, a great community, and we're only as great as the citizens who come and support it. So thank you so very much.
We've had a request that if there's anyone here to celebrate Scott's award, if they'd come up front and have a group picture to honor him. So, and then we probably have a few more words of congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much to everyone who nominated Mr. Ramsey. And I would like to point a personal privilege since before I retired, I taught at the Richfield Public Schools, and there were many days when we were out at Wood Lake Nature Center with Scott, and it was a pleasure to watch him with the kids, you know, whether they were out there building shelters and trying to see if they would have survived in the winter if the bus ran off the road and different things like that. And he taught them all kinds of things, and it was fun. And he, you know, time after time, you'd always see Scott working with the kids. And so I just think this is a very well-deserved reward or award. So thank you so much for all that you've done over the years, and we wish you well. Is there anybody else that wishes to say anything? All right. Thank you again. All right. Next, we would like to welcome Hennepin County Commissioner Debbie Gotel, who is going to present an update on the work being done by Hennepin County. Welcome, Commissioner Gotel.
Thank you. Am I driving over here or somebody else over there? I am. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Supple, and thank you, council members and the city staff here at Richfield. It's always a pleasure to come home. This definitely feels like home. I'm Debbie Gotel, the Hennepin County Commissioner. And for those who are in the general public who are listening, I just want to let people know what the district is. The district is the City of Richfield, Bloomington, Eden Prairie, south of Crest Town, and now a small piece of southwest Minneapolis. So that changed after redistricting. You know, while you here at the city, the city council members and staff, understand what Hennepin County commissioners do, a lot of folks don't. You know, Hennepin County kind of flies under the radar despite our far-reaching investments impact and the dollars that we spend. In Minnesota, Hennepin County is Minnesota's second-largest government after the state of Minnesota, the largest local government statewide. Seven commissioners make up the board, and they function much like the council does here. We steward two-point-seven billion dollars annually for the budget across human services, public health, public safety, public works, jails, courts, elections, libraries, and a lot more. Disparity reduction is the driving principle that is embedded in all of the work we do, as well as our budget and how we spend our county dollars. Through our Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRA, we also steward considerable investments in housing and economic development. We do this on behalf of one-point-three million diverse residents. That's about one in five Minnesotans, you know, here who call Hennepin County home. As the second-largest government in the state, we can offer considerable weight in advocating for our municipal and local partners for things we want to see passed into state law. Some of the issues are up here, like the extended producer responsibility, anti-displacement, the increase in homeless funding, the African-American Family Preservation Act, and tenants' rights. We also want to thank the City of Richfield for being a great partner. You share your legislative agenda with us every year. We share ours, and we make sure that we're working together to pass things that help us both. And I really want to say thank you for that, and thank you for letting us help you because we all work better together. Affordable housing creation and supports are some of the most important investments we make in increasing the quality of life for all Hennepin County residents. This is a county-housing-first model. In twenty twenty-three, we invested a hundred and ninety-one million dollars in this line of business, contributing over half of those dollars out of our general fund. In May and June of this year alone, the county and the HRA board approved funding awards totaling twenty-point-three million, which will create and preserve sixteen-hundred units of affordable housing in our communities. And we're seeing this at a very large-scale process. This is really ramping up. These are first dollars in. This helps developers secure financing for these projects, and it has a huge impact. And now I want to talk about some really good news. We're also making huge impacts on supporting our unsheltered homeless communities. First time you're hearing me say this, right? Because this is the first time we've really seen this. We're helping them attain housing, and numbers are moving in all the right directions for several months now. In our family shelters, the outflow of people, those being sheltered and finding homes, are exceeding those coming into our shelters. So much so, that since January, we have shrunk the total family shelter rooms by more than forty percent, closing over two hundred units. So that's quite an accomplishment. This is due to our enhanced funding in the twenty twenty-four homeless prevention efforts at eviction court and nimble triage of new homeless families with our partners, sites, and our organization and our nonprofits. So how do we do this? Each program participant is paired with a case manager who provides holistic supports and resources to help them sustainably secure housing. That same person is throughout the whole process handling all aspects of needs, even other than housing. We had led this, has come to a great success that we've had, making sure that they have one point of contact for all their needs. They're handed off, but then checked back with. It's always the same person. They run into an issue after they're home. They can call back to that same person who will advocate for them. Ninety-four percent of the individuals housed through this program have yet to return to homelessness. That's stable over one year. In May, we reached a milestone of a thousand individuals housed. That's quite an accomplishment. When the pandemic, with the pandemic in the rear mirror now, we're still working towards spending down the county's dollars, which was two-hundred-and-forty-seven million dollars awarded from the ARPA dollars, from the federal government. In May, as of this year, more than a hundred and seventy-three million has gone out the door to help pay for programming that has helped our residents emerge stronger and more resilient. The remainder is allocated and will be spent by the end of the year. It's already programmed. Our mental health issues around Hennepin County, we're working really hard on many fronts to mitigate and build out the mental health supports across our entire continuum of care. We're proud of our police-embedded social worker program. Richfield is intimately involved and an early adopter from the very beginning. You started with a pilot. Thank you. You folks are very progressive. You were one of our trials. We can always count on you when we want to try something new. So appreciate that. This has become an essential new response method, serving municipalities. Now, we have forty-five social workers total. I know you guys share one too, don't you, with Edina now? I believe you have more. So appreciate that. In twenty twenty-three alone, Richfield Police have made a hundred and eighty-seven referrals to the embedded social worker, fifty-four referrals to other social services, and so the work continues. In twenty twenty-three, we launched a one-point-seven million dollar mental health awareness community campaign aimed at normalizing mental health and having conversations and reducing the stigma through education and connections. The call to truly see mental health earned more than two-hundred-million total impressions, ensuring people are reached multiple times in various ways. The See Mental Health team participants participated in thirty-six community events, engaging in more than eight thousand people in person and across our county. According to the Center of Disease Control and CDC, more than four in ten students feel persistently sad or hopeless. One in three experience poor mental health, and our school-based mental health partnerships are helping to turn this around. This is doing true prevention work. As reported by The Men Post in January, researchers believe school-based mental health services have resulted in two-hundred-and-sixty fewer self-reported suicide attempts by Hennepin County students in grade six through twelve from two thousand and four to twenty twenty-four. Proud of that work. We are providing services to sixty-six hundred students yearly, and this program is in every district, in every public school in this- in every public school in this county. So it saddens me to read the papers recently where other counties, in other counties, school districts are actually cutting these programs because of their school budgets. I'm glad we're able to help hold this up. It's very important. Elevate Hennepin is a resource hub. I know that many of you know about this. It's connecting our local entrepreneurs to expert advisors at no cost. Yes, this is free services on a wide range of topics, and it's just a piece of a broader strategy we're growing to support entrepreneurs and businesses at every stage. Richfield is closely aligned with this program, and thank you for your support in that. Appreciate it. Thousands of businesses have used Elevate Hennepin, including more than 2,700, who have accessed over 31,000 hours of no-cost, one-on-one consulting or cohort learning opportunities. This translated to 133 businesses having access $25 million in financing through our advisor network, impacting over 500 jobs, some in this community. To help augment this work, I'm excited to announce that Hennepin is adding $20 million to our established capital fund that we established in 2021. This will make more financing available to business owners in early 2025. This will leverage direct loans and technical support areas to help businesses across Hennepin County. These are examples of how we're continuing to nurture and innovate, born out of the pandemic We're also excited about the Southdale Project. It's finally coming to pass after many starts and stops. Thank you for your patience. After years of planning, funds were included in the 2024 budget, proposed budget, to proceed with a new construction. We're proud to say today, the Hennepin County Board approved first funds for architectural and engineering services to begin the, and the construction will begin next year. This is going to be a zero-net energy building with the extra funds that we added to this project. This is roughly $6.5 million out of $107 million capital investments that we have. This will fund one of the most advanced and visited libraries in our county system. So congratulations. I know that it's in Edina, but it serves Richfield, and I know Richfield really loves this library and uses it a lot. And now for an Augsburg Park update. You will get a further update from Hennepin County that will be in here soon to talk to you. But it will close for planned interior and exterior work beginning Sunday, July 14, and expected to open early spring in 2025. The project will include new carpet and paint throughout the building, new furniture, interior modifications, upgrades to restrooms and windows, additional studying rooms, and updated meeting rooms. The exterior preservation will have updates to the building infrastructure and stormwater management, and some green space and reconfiguration of the parking lot. So look forward to hearing, you'll hear more from that from Hennepin County. I want to move on to climate change. Now for something completely different. It's all about trees. This directly links to our climate change goals and our sequestration goals. At Hennepin County, our goal is to plant 1 million trees by 2030 in collaboration with our local partners. Thank you. You're one of those local partners who takes advantage of this. We appreciate it. We estimate that 472,000 trees will have been planted by the end of 2024. Some really great things I want to highlight in the program are Hennepin County just received $10 million in federal forestry funds to remove and replace diseased trees on owner-occupied, lower-income housing in federally-designated community opportunity zones census tracts, which include a portion of Richfield. 500,000 is made available annually through our Healthy Tree Canopy Grant Program to cities, schools, and affordable housing providers and nonprofits. We have a wholesale tree purchasing program, and opportunities for cities can take part in that. And the county's first-ever urban tree carbon offset sales program just launched in 2023. So lots going on on that side, besides our zero-waste initiative that we have at the county. Lastly, in partnership with the Public Works Department here in Richfield, I want to thank Director Kristin Asher. We wanted to include a map and list of some of the future infrastructure projects on the horizon. I won't go through all of them because I know you know them, and I know they're up on your website as well as ours. I just want to extend a big thanks for the collaboration between Richfield and Hennepin and making these improvements possible. And I really appreciate the communication. So if we drop the ball on something, we can pick it back up. It's a really great communication line with the city here. And all these projects are easily found on Hennepin County's website, GIS Web Maps, for both transportation activities and the capital improvement projects, as well as the Richfield City site. And finally, I just want to say, Mayor Supple, I want to say a big thanks for all the work that you have done as a city partner with us. And I always look forward to coming home and having these conversations. So I'm happy to stand for any comments or questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions that anybody has? Commissioner Hayford O'Leary, or Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. We were just at a work session, so.
You just got elevated.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So my question and comment, the Penn Avenue project, of course, since Simon Trautman is not here, I have to say how excited he probably will be, since that continues to be a priority for him on the West Side. But it's a priority for all of us, of course. Do you know, is the program project the entire length, or is it only part of the length like the Nicollet project? Like, will it be all the way from 62 to 77th?
My understanding is that it's all the way from, yes, from Crosstown down through there. And you know they are revisiting that, and because of the infrastructure dollars and because of the work at the state level to put in those extra taxes for transportation, that project is likely to move up on the list. One of the other things that I've asked the county to do is, we do scoring. That's how we get these projects up the list. But one of the things that's lacking in the scoring is the infrastructure under the road. We know that there are huge limitations in parts of Penn Avenue to do redevelopment for businesses because of the size of the water line there. And I have asked us, as we revisit, how we grade projects, to look at that as part of that, because that really matters, and it really stifles the economic development that we could be doing on those ends, just because the infrastructure is aged.
And then I also want to say, obviously, we're grateful for the funding aspect, and that's why we really depend on you of advocating for Richfield, making sure these projects are funded. But I also just want to share, having been involved in the public process of street design, how much Hennepin County has improved in the last decade of the staff's approach to making our streets. I truly think Hennepin County roads have gone from being like the worst road in the community, not in terms of pavement quality, but in terms of being a wall of fast-moving cars, to like an actual good main street. Like, you know, it's not perfect, but it is so much farther along. It is so much more inclusive of a street design than it ever has been before. And I'm seeing that in Minneapolis on Lyndale Avenue. I'm seeing it in Richfield on Nicollet Avenue. Truly, the things in 66th Street where we were pushing hard against county staff 10 years ago are now the way they do business as a matter of course. And I know it's pressure from electeds that have helped make that change, ambition to staff changes. So I'm just so grateful for that because you're truly becoming the best streets in communities like Richfield, and we're really grateful for that.
So I'm the one who carried the complete and green streets for that, to bring this back to the residents. And it was because the cities were wanting it too. They pushed it. But we also had a lot of changes in some of the management, who had better, brighter ideas and who wanted to implement those things too. So it really helps we all came together to make some of those changes. But yes, I agree with you. I want safer streets, and I definitely want traffic to slow down. And we're really working hard to get to that zero fatality, zero injuries.
And then one additional comment I will make, as you continue to look at improving streets, I do know the cost participation policy of Hennepin County continues to be an issue for us in the city of Richfield. Of course, we're very excited to see these streets come through, but they do come with big bills for the locals. And unfortunately, the way it's worked in the past is that often those features that the county now supports, like protected bike lanes, actually increase the share of the city is responsible for. So I would certainly, in general, love to see the county pick up more of the tab, but especially that those good features, like pedestrian lighting, like trees, like protected bike lanes, don't cause a bigger bill for the city than they would with a more conventional approach.
Well, and that's a conversation that we need to have about the true disparities. When you look at the city of Richfield, you know, it's surrounded by state roads, federal roads, and then a lot of county roads through it disproportionate to some of the other communities with much larger budgets who may be able to afford that in a different way. We really need to look at this through a new lens, and I think there's opportunities to look at that in the next years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for coming and presenting. It was a lot of really great information. I was so thrilled when you said that 94% of the people that you found shelter for are still in shelter and they're not unhoused. I mean, that's a remarkable, remarkable accomplishment, and I appreciate all the support that the county has been giving to help finding secure housing for people, because that is, makes a big difference to everyone involved. I also was very thrilled to hear that you're going to be supporting the school-based mental health services, because as a former teacher, I understand how important that is. But I also think after the pandemic, there's still a lot of residual trauma that's going on. And I think investing in the kids, that helps people to heal, but also prevents problems later on. And it's much easier to take care of our children than to try and deal with somebody who's having problems when they're an adult. It's much easier to help heal the kids. So I appreciate that greatly. Finally, the Elevate Hennepin program. I have been hearing wonderful things from our business community. Talked to a couple of different people that have taken advantages of those services, and they're very excited about it. And it was really great to see the participation from people here in Richfield in that program, because I think we want, it's really good if we can build our small businesses and help people with their entrepreneurial endeavors. So I truly do appreciate that. So I don't have any specific questions, but I would also like to lift up the social worker program. Later on in the agenda, we're going to go through the, one of the agenda items in the consent agenda is to approve an amended agreement between Hennepin County Human Services and Public Health Department and the City of Richfield Police Department for two full-time senior social workers, one embedded and one on the alternative response team. And so I really appreciate your leadership, because that's a way that we can support the residents of our community and also support our public safety officers in getting people the help they need. Because, you know, there's very, a big difference between somebody who's in and having a mental health crisis and somebody who's, say, robbing a bank. I mean, it's two very different situations, and we need to have the resources that are appropriate for each one. So thank you so much for that. And I don't know if you want to say anymore about the alternative response teams or...
No, no, we're fully supportive of that. And we know that, you know, besides the police, there are other places with our fire departments and even through our community response folks, that we see things that we could be working on together more. So I think it's a great idea to have an alternative response, and you're not the only one who is working on that. I did want to add though, because you and I chat enough about the homelessness issue in Richfield, which I see as a growing issue. And I'm concerned about it. And when I call and I talk to dispatch, I find out that people have been out there numerous times. So first, thank you, Public Safety, for going out there and doing that. Because of that, I'm going to be calling in our homeless team to come and have, they will have regular contact with these individuals that I saw. I saw a family with children that was very disturbing on Penn and Crosstown. But if, I know you keep your eyes open too. So council members and folks, if you see folks, I can call a specialty team. And they will be out and have contact with that, those folks, every single day, and until they can get them into services. And they'll help you out there. So it's to a point where I think we need to make sure that somebody is contacting them and that, you know, the police can't be there all the time doing that. And I know you help us out a lot, but let us help you some with the services that we have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much. It's always good to hear what's going on and to see you here, and you're welcome anytime to come back to the city of Richfield.
Well, I show up every so often.
All right. Thank you.
It's good to see you. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We have approved the agenda. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the approval of an amended agreement between the Hennepin County Human Services and Public Health Department and the City of Richfield Police Department for two full-time senior social workers, one embedded and one on the alternative response team. Item B, consider the approval of an agreement for prosecution services with the City of Richfield and HJ Law. Item C, consider the adoption of a resolution supporting hazard mitigation planning efforts and adopting the Hennepin County All Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item D, consider a resolution extending American Rescue Plan Act funding contract with VEIP Inc. from June 30, 2024 to December 31, 2024. Item E, consider adoption of a resolution approving a joint powers agreement with the City of Edina for speed limits on shared local streets. Item F, consider adoption of a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the City of Minneapolis for speed limits on shared local streets. Item G, consider a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with the City of Minneapolis at all regarding the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, Partnership and Scope of Work. Item H, first reading of a transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements from the Liquor Contribution Special Revenue Fund. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Is there a motion about the consent calendar?
So moved.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion?
I'm gonna, I would like to say I was really pleased that Commissioner Gotal happened to be here tonight when we were talking about what the county's doing, because I think this embedded social worker program has been fabulous, and I'm really looking forward to the alternative response team and all that that's going to be doing. So I just want to lift that up, because it's a fabulous thing. If you're interested in learning about the alternative response team, we did have a work session on it recently, and you can go back and watch that information. Is there any other things that anybody would like to discuss?
Okay. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We have approved the consent calendar. All right. Need a second here to get caught up on the agenda. All right. So item six is to consider a first reading of an ordinance amendment adjusting parking requirements, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
At its April 25, 2023 work session on policy topic priorities, the council directed staff to examine parking requirements to address a few longstanding issues and to continue to work on broader citywide objectives. A joint work session was held with the Planning Commission and City Council on February 26, 2024. The attached ordinance is a result of the direction provided by council members and commissioners at the work session. In short, the ordinance updates the city parking requirements in a few ways. First, it reduces the requirements for a Class III restaurant. It creates a requirement for libraries, museums, and art galleries. It expands the council's flexibility in relation to non-driving populations, and it adjusts the parking requirement for multifamily housing to be consistent across all zoning districts at 1.25. They also noted in the staff report that staff from several departments have concerns with this proposed change. While on-street parking is not a problem in theory, there are concerns with the design of some rights-of-way that lead to safety issues, specifically a lack of sidewalks to replace on-street walking and biking space. Rights-of-way less than 36 feet wide, particularly on east-west roads, can make emergency vehicle access when they're difficult when there is snow. And restrictions to on-street parking on those narrower roads leads to police enforcement issues and could push parking deeper into neighborhoods, resulting in complaints. Staff recommends retaining and expanding the current discretionary language, allowing a reduction to 1.25 stalls and including roadway width and orientation and factors to be considered. And then finally, the other update is to revise the parking maximum for multifamily only. They note that due to the proposed adjustment to the minimum parking requirement for multifamily, staff recommends also adjusting the parking maximum for multifamily. This would help ensure that the new multifamily residential development has the flexibility needed to secure funding. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 29. The commission recommended approval of the ordinance as presented and recommended that the council consider additional study of the city's sidewalk policies and funding, as well as additional study of reducing or eliminating... as well as additional study of reducing or eliminating parking minimums in areas of close proximity to high-frequency transit lines and stations. Staff agrees that there is a direct nexus between sidewalks and parking, as well as factors like road width, and that is why we continue to recommend that the discretionary language be retained and even expanded. However, the ordinance reflects the direction provided at the work session and by the Planning Commission and does not include this discretionary language. Does staff have anything to add?
Thank you, councilmember. If you'd like, I could address some of the comments that came up earlier as part of the open forum, just as a matter of clarification.
Sure.
I did want to say that we are not proposing neither staff nor the Planning Commission's proposed ordinance to eliminate any parking requirements. There will still be parking requirements for every use that is detailed in the zoning code. In terms of variances, there's a lot of confusion about when a variance can be used. A variance is for a very unique situation. It's specifically stated that it is not for a situation that applies holistically to, excuse me, to other similar uses in that category or in that district. So for instance, we would not want to be, or not be allowed by statute to be considering a variance related to parking on each and every multifamily development. What we want to do is set standards that apply to our developments in general. And then when there are unique situations, for instance, a use where there isn't a need for parking because of X, Y, and Z. Or where there might be topography challenges that would make the building setback in the code impossible to meet and develop something on that land. It's for truly unique circumstances, not for each and every application that you would consider. That is a very common misconception, so I did want to clear that up. And then one other thing about variances, the councils, council has a goal to create an environment that fosters affordable housing and a clear development process. What we want to do in general when we write our codes is make sure that we are reducing uncertainty. Uncertainty in the development process increases costs for developers. And often, the city that is providing some sort of subsidy in a lot of these cases, it increases the subsidy needed for that development. It actually discourages development. So we want to set standards that are generally applicable throughout the community. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the staff report.
So it's my intention in a few moments to make a motion to postpone this discussion until the next meeting, because we have two councilmembers that aren't here, and there is new information in the staff report. But I do think we should have some discussion first before I go to that motion. So I just want to be clear of what my intentions are. But I know there are things that people would like to discuss and talk about, and then we can make our decision. So Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So I'm a little bit confused about the, the comments about discretionary language because we do, what is proposed before us is a minimum of 1.25, which is already common throughout the community in mixed-use districts, I believe. And there's discretionary to lower it for certain low-driving populations. So is it staff's opinion or was it staff's preference that it be like 1.5, but you have these additional considerations? Or what, what did that mean?
Yes, thank you for the question. Staff's preference would be that, right now in the MR2 district, the requirement is two stalls per unit with a reduction to 1.5. In the higher-density MR3, it is 1.5 with, I'm sorry, it is 1.5 with the reduction to 1.25. What we're proposing, what staff's preference would be, would be that we would be consistent at the 1.5 with the reduction to 1.25, so long as factors would warrant. So there weren't things like abnormally narrow streets or building orientations that would make it difficult to plow snow because shadows would make it difficult to plow and, and difficult access for emergency vehicles, things like that.
Okay. And I do want to hear more about the concerns. I, in my opinion, the, the concerns, to the extent I've heard them so far, it, it seems like we, we do regulate the use of on-street parking. And if we have a problem with streets becoming too narrow, then we should regulate that as on-street parking consideration. I think it's just kind of the tail wagging the dog to try to address this through land use policy as opposed to the rules of parking on the street, which we can, we can enforce and we do enforce and we, we can sign for. I'm also particularly confused why we'd want, in general, a higher requirement for MR2, MR3 than we do for mixed use when they're, they seem pretty similar. From the average person on the ground, it's a new apartment building going up on a busy street. It seems that the vast majority of sites that are likely to turn over to higher-density use are already in this 1.25 mixed-use zone. So what would be the basis of wanting more parking specifically for this one type of multifamily?
Right. I think the thinking here is that when you have the mix of commercial, those commercial are going to turn over at the time then you would need them for the multifamily. And so it would free up some additional space that would otherwise be designated when we calculate the parking need for the commercial use. That's the thinking behind it.
But we do have plenty of standalone mixed-use buildings that are just residential in that zone, correct?
In the MUN district?
I don't recall if that's MUN or MUC, but for example, all the stuff around 64th and Lyndale is mixed use, and that's why it's at 1.25. Like the Henley, the Riley.
Yep, I would have to go back and look at exactly what those ratios are.
Okay. So I guess that my, the, the point I'm trying to make is, to me, it doesn't make sense to, although theoretically, I, I agree if we had, everything was truly mixed use. But the way we tend to use that is really, most of our redevelopment districts are mixed use. And, and to me, effectively, this isn't a big change, except that by having it at 1.5, we're just going to make it more difficult to develop those limited MR3, MR2 sites. So I, I support what's ahead of us. I would be prepared to vote yes on the first reading today. And I, that is not a discount of the concerns of other staff, and I want to hear more about them. My initial instinct is that that would be better addressed through Public Works types thing. And I want to thank, by the way, staff and the Planning Commission for mentioning the sidewalk issue. I think it is clear that there are certain areas of the community that have more demand for sidewalks than others, and I support us coming up with a program to fund and to install sidewalks in those areas where it's clear that it's not cutting it to share the street.
Did you have anything to follow up before I go on to the next question?
Yes, thank you. I did want to follow up with the Henley and the Riley. Those are, that is actually a spot where we do have some trouble in the winter, the, where the narrow, the road is a little more narrow. We do have some, and we have had to put restrictions in. I believe, speaking for Public Works, Public Safety, and Fire Service, that, you know, that's, that's a lot of staff time on the backend to try to figure that out and rein it back in. I think their preference would have been if we could have said, this is a narrow road, let's think about how we want to apply a 1.25. And, and granted, we are not proposing that we increase the mixed use. But I, I think that is where the concerns are coming from, that that's a lot of staff time on the backend to try and relook at those.
I had a question on the staff report here. It says the recommendation was to revise the parking maximum for multifamily only. Due to the proposed adjustment to the minimum requirement for multifamily, staff recommends also adjusting the parking maximum for multifamily. This would help ensure that new multifamily residential development has the flexibility needed to secure funding and see the policy section. So can you explain what that concern is about the maximum and how it interplays and affects funding for different projects?
Yes, thank you for the question. So by reducing the parking minimum, right now, our parking maximums are set based, based on a percentage. Depends on how many parking stalls there are and how far you can go above the minimum. What we're trying to do is make sure that they're not overbuilding their parking in exchange for green space or other landscaping or buffering that we also feel is important. When we reduce the parking requirement for multifamily to 1.5 by right, we are concerned that there could be cases where a development could not get to 1.5, which we have run into developments where their financing has required, their underwriting has required at least 1.5 stalls for that development to get funded. What we're trying to do is make sure that there is still the flexibility in our maximums to allow a project to get there if, if needed.
So I think I would be in support of making sure that we have maximums that allow that flexibility so that we don't prevent something from happening. I also would like to hear more, and I understand that some of the staff aren't able to be here tonight, but more about what the concerns were from the other departments, which is why I'm going to be asking that we postpone the discussion, just so that we have more time and all councilmembers present. I do like the idea of, of being able to have some discretion and not locking ourselves in. I haven't decided one way or the other on that, but I'd like more information and discussion about that proposal that's talking about adding that discretion. Because I do think we have noticed some of the things with the narrower streets, because there's a big difference in different sections of Richfield with how wide the streets are. And so there are things that need to be considered. So I'd like to have time for full consideration of that, which is why I think we should postpone so we can, can continue the discussion. So I don't know. Councilmember Christiansen, did you have any questions or anything you wanted to ask before?
No, I, I do agree with the request for postponing to make sure that all the council members be fully aware of what the proposal is.
So at this point, I would like to move that we postpone discussion of this item time certain to the next, so the first reading will be at the next council meeting that we have. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Now we'll have discussion of, because this is a postponement, we can actually discuss it. If it was a tabling, there'd be no discussion. So we can postpone, we can discuss. So pros and cons of postponing this.
I don't feel super strongly. I think this is a first reading. I'm not clear what we're going to accomplish with that. But if it, you know, there, there is some controversy here, I think, I think it's fine. So I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. I, my feelings are that because there are questions and not everybody's able to be here, that it's better to wait since this is not a time-sensitive thing. If, if we wait another two weeks, you know, we, we can still decide in two weeks. So anyway, go ahead.
I do just want to, it was really a discussion for the main thing, but I do just want to highlight something that Director Pahman said that I really appreciated about, just something for us to noodle on in the next two weeks, in the next four weeks. I really appreciated Director Pahman's response about sort of reducing bias by having clear standards. And that's part of the reason why I don't want to see us go back on this discretionary language. And I think it, it is clearer, it is more legally defensible when we have clear standards and we limit the amount of sort of squishy decision-making, because bias comes into that decision-making. And we don't, we don't sit down and we think we're going to favor this group or this developer over the other. But the bias of how, how you reach out, people have perceptions about those people are going to live there, those people are going to leave their cars in the street. All of that stuff factors in, and it affects our decision-making. So as much as we can set clear, fair rules, just like we do for single-family homes, I think the better decision-making we have, the clearer we can be with developers, the more friendly we can be towards investment in our community, and the better we can do towards having housing abundance. So I really want us to keep that to a minimum, and I hope that we can think about that in the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you. I have one other staff request. For me, it's hard to compare the language when, when we've got some language in front of us, and then you say, well, we could maybe do this, that, or the other thing. Is it possible to have two sets of alternate language so we can compare one which would include the discretion and have it at 1.5, and one which is the current language, so that we have an idea of exactly what we would be voting on and discussing? I don't know, just, we can stick with the original language and then have the alternate as, because I know on the staff report, sometimes there's a section that has alternate possibilities. So that would be helpful.
Yes, Mayor Seppa, we could prepare a second version of the resolution or of the ordinance that would show the discretionary language there.
And then it would also be helpful in the staff report to clearly show where the MR2, MR3 is versus the mixed use, just so people understand. These areas, if you build an apartment building, this is affected by this change, these areas, it's, it's going to remain at the, or the, the lower rate.
Yes, you're asking for just a zoning map?
Just a zoning map and explanation that the brown, the brown areas are the ones that we're talking about.
Yes, we can do that.
Thanks.
All right, are there, is there any other discussion or requests before we vote on the postponement? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to postpone this discussion of the first, or action on the first reading time certain to our next council meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've postponed action on this item till our next council meeting. And then that'll just be added, if I'm understanding correctly, the parliamentary procedure to the next meeting. All right, awesome. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the summary of the City Manager's Annual Performance Evaluation. So I'm going to go ahead and read that one. So this is the summary of the City Manager's Annual Performance Evaluation for the period of July 2023 to June 2024. It was held on June 11th and June 18th, 2024, as required by Minnesota statutes 13D.05, subdivision 3A, and consider a resolution amending the employment agreement between the City of Richfield and City Manager Katie Rodriguez. Each year, the City Council conducts a review of the City Manager's performance for the previous year. The review considers the performance of the City Manager and the organization as measured against the goals and expectations of the City Council. Such performance evaluations are conducted in a closed session pursuant to U.S. state statute, excuse me, to Minnesota state statutes and summarized in an open meeting. In addition to the performance evaluation, the City Council also takes this opportunity to review the City Manager's salary and benefits to make any adjustments that may be warranted. So before I make the motion, I'm going to read the executive summary of the closed session. On behalf of the full council, this is a summary of City Manager Rodriguez's performance review. We believe that City Manager Rodriguez has been doing a great job. We appreciate her communication, responsiveness, and commitment to equity as she coordinated several complex projects like the Compensation and Classification Study, Charter Amendments, Speed Limit Changes, and our legislative agenda. We support her continued focus on the strategic plan, long-term planning, and her work to strengthen internal organizational infrastructure as we onboard new staff, upgrade software and IT systems, and move forward with future projects. So that was the summary. So at this time, I would like to move, to move to approve the resolution amending the City Manager's employment agreement with the city reflecting a salary adjustment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have approved the resolution. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the contract with the law enforcement labor services, or the police officers, for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025, and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement. Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city staff has completed labor negotiations with law enforcement labor services. The provisions of the 2024-2025 labor agreement cover all of the police officers. The two-year contract provides the following changes. Increase in vacation cell back from 48 hours to 64 hours to match our non-union policy. Increase the total annual holiday leave from 96 hours to 104 hours because of the additional Juneteenth holiday. Include the same employer-provided health and dental insurance contributions as given to the non-representative, representative employee groups. Increase the monthly payment for those employees in a special assignment from $275 to $300 a month. This includes juvenile investigator slash school liaison officer, special investigative unit, Henepin County Violent Offender Task Force Crime Prevention, and an employee who holds the ranks of police officer and is assigned by the employer as an officer assigned to investigations. Adjusting the special pay for canine handlers to follow state statute. Wage adjustments to include a 3% COLA and an 8% market adjustment for this top step in 2024, and a 3% COLA and a 1% market adjustment for all steps in 2025. In addition, the six-step scale system was equally divided to provide 5.5% increases between steps. Previously, the step increases were not equally divided and varied each year. In order to reduce the step increases, the starting steps were increased by a greater percentage. The higher starting pay is consistent with the wages required to complete in, to compete in the historically tight market for law enforcement personnel. in the historically tight market for law enforcement personnel. Does the staff wish to enter anything else?
I do, thank you, council member. So, we had always planned tonight to share the dollar impact of the contract. I waited till tonight, because we are going through our budget process, and it's a very detailed process, and I knew we'd have more accurate numbers tonight. Also, I wanted to remind everyone that we did a very high-level estimate, as part of presenting to you the decision on the comp and class. So, we did a high-level estimate months ago about what the union contracts could be, because I wanted you to have those dollars, because we had, we knew at that time how historically tight this market is, and how much wage pressure, upward wage pressure that was out there. So, we gave you those estimates months ago, and so, when we estimated the officers' salaries as part of that decision on the comp and class pay plans, we estimated it would be about a $300,000 increase for those officers' salaries, and that was over the budgeted 3%. So, we had already put 3% in the 2024 budget for a COLA. We calculated that the contract, if there were, if all the officer positions were filled, it would be an additional $50,000 in 2024. However, there have been vacancies in 2024, so that mostly erases that additional $50,000. The impact of a 3% COLA, a 1% market adjustment, and then those officers going through the steps, and what I mean by going through the steps, is that on their anniversary, they go from like step one to step two, or step three to step four, and that, we estimate to be $285,000 for 2025. So, I also just want to, I want to just briefly introduce this. This has been a tough contract to negotiate, because it is such a tight labor market. There's just been rapid increases even in the last year, because there's just too few people going into law enforcement, and so, it's been a challenge for recruitment and retention. However, I really feel like this contract will help us with that. It is comparable to our peer cities, and it is also a more sustainable pay plan for the future. I want to thank the negotiating team for their good work. I know that SAC wants to thank folks regularly, so I won't steal his thunder on that, but I do want to thank SAC, our Assistant City Manager, SAC Tong Van, for all his work on this. And with that, I'll turn it over to SAC.
Thank you. Mayor Councilmembers, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank LES, also their business agent and the officer stewards that were part of, part of the negotiation. As you know, that we did conduct a wage and comp study in 2023 to 2024, and just to give you an understanding of the pace of the profession, as regards to retention and recruitment, if you take a look at, even 10 years ago, if you take a look at the Leek site, you might have maybe four or five openings for police officers, and now, if you take a look at the Leek site now, you'll have about seven or eight pages of openings throughout Minnesota. One of the things that I think the City of Richfield, we're a little sheltered from some of that, is the professional environment that Chief Henthorn has developed here with the city, not only in terms of the training for the officers, but the recruitment, the retention. You know, one of the things that, when we concluded this negotiation, there was things all across the table to not only the staff that was involved in it, but also the officers that were a part of the negotiation, and the, and we couldn't say enough about the dedication and the professionalism, the work that the police officers do for the City of Richfield, and then vice versa. They also mentioned the same thing about staff, too. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank staff, especially our HR manager, Jamie Heitner, also that was involved in this process, and she was involved in the negotiation, but also the data that was collected, because, as I said, we did conduct a wage and comp study, and right when we got it from Baker Telly, we had to refresh the numbers right away. And then, even with that refreshment, or the refreshing of the data, the officers, the officer stewards also provided comparable data, not only for our comparable cities, but the surrounding communities also, that, that not only we pull from, but also that other comparable cities pull to. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the negotiations team. We really appreciate all the hard work that went into this. Is there a motion now?
Yes, we choose to, by motion, adopt a resolution approving, approving the provisions of the 2024-2025 labor agreement with the LES, the bargaining unit, and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? As I said, I do appreciate all the work that went into this, because I do understand it's a very tight labor market, and we hear about that when I go to events where there are other mayors, and people are talking about how difficult it is to recruit and retain staff, so, and thank you, Chief Henthorn, for all you do to set up a climate where people want to stay in Richfield and want to apply here. I appreciate that. Is there any other comments, questions? All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution approving the provisions of the 2024 labor agreement, or 2024-2025 labor agreement with the LES bargaining unit, and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have passed the motion. Next, we'll move on to the City Manager's report.
My only report is to thank you for your feedback and your commitment to continue improvements for the residents of Richfield. That's all I have tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to claims and payroll.
Move approval of claims and payroll.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Is there any discussion? All right. So, all in favor of approving claims and payroll, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved claims and payroll. Next, we'll move to hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes, I'd like to give a hats off to the Richfield History Center this Saturday, June 29th, 2024, at 1:00 PM. At the History Center, there will be Quick Steps Baseball, and for those of you who don't know that, that is a 1860s-style of baseball, with the 1860s rules and everything, and it's an exhibition game, so, and there will be concessions to purchase there also.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I wanted to just recognize that today is July 25th, and Richfield Drive is 25, starting today. So, thanks to the public works staff that did this rollout, the materials look great, it's great seeing the signs around town, and thanks to Public Safety for their work making this happen and making drivers follow it. So, I'm really, I'm really excited about it, and I've heard a lot of enthusiasm from folks. I also just want to thank the Richard 4th of July Committee for their work, because that will happen before our next meeting. I'm just so grateful, it is so hard to get, to reestablish a tradition like that, and they've just been putting in the hours and doing so much work, raising funds, getting things organized, there's so many logistics, and as well as our staff that are assisting them in making that happen. So, I'm just so excited for having a proper 4th of July in Richfield again.
Thank you. And you've stolen my thunder, because those were the two items I was going to talk about, but I did want to point out that if you want to get one of these great yard signs, you can go to the Community Center to pick them up, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 5:00. And if you need more information, there's frequently asked questions on the city website. If you go out to, if you happen to stop by City Hall, we have bilingual information that explains all of the changes, and I thought it was very appropriate that we're driving 25 on the 25th, so, I don't know if that was just fortuitous, or somebody planned that out. And also, I did want to thank the 4th of July Committee, they've been doing fabulous work, and I believe they're still looking for volunteers. So, if you would like to volunteer and help, there's still a few slots open, you can look up, look them up on their website and sign up to volunteer for a slot. All right.
Just as a reminder also, that the parade this year is not on 66th Street, it is on 70th. So, from Harriet Avenue to about the high school, all the way to the STEM school over on 12th Avenue.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. If there's no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move adjournment?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?